Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to the Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. If I was talking and you couldn't hear me earlier, we had a little technical difficulty, but we just got out of executive session. And I'll repeat again that our meeting is being televised with audio from Foxborough Cable Access. So with Steph standing already, Steph, why don't you lead us in the...
I would love to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, awesome. So anybody here for a citizen's input? Anything emailed to us, Christina? Nothing?
Okay.
I'm gonna actually step off for this first one, too, just as a direct of butter.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah. So is Fox Cafe here?
Yep.
You guys right in front of us?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Come on up. You'll be next on the agenda. Have a seat. Have ya? Introduce yourselves and...
Wait, which building is this?
Primo's.
Primo's?
Oh.
Six Mechanic.
I don't know about that building.
[laughing] So, welcome.
Thank you.
Some of us have been going to Primo's for 35 years or more, so it was a little bit of a surprise when we heard, but welcome. This is outstanding. Tell us a little bit who you are and a little bit about what's going on.
We are...
Residents of Walpole at the moment.
Yeah? And your names?
Lydia and I'm Sergey.
Okay.
So we've been living in Massachusetts since 2016, and we used to live in Washington, DC before. And I'm actually a commercial fisherman.
For 20 years?
For 20 years out of New Bedford. And Lydia, she used to work at the restaurants before, and we always had an idea like, maybe we can get some breakfast place or something. And now we got two kids, 10 and seven years old, and we feel like it is a time for us to open something, and it would be great for the kids to grow with business, and she loves it, so...
Awesome.
But also, you're gonna be doing fishing.
Any...
I'll help as much as I can.
So tell us a little bit about the restaurant itself.
We're gonna run as a Primo.
Yeah.
Just we're gonna keep their menu, their systems, their great food, gonna add a little bit more like soups, run specials, like, you know, for example, Tuesday, like Taco Day, Thursday Mediterranean meal, just see like, run like different dishes and see like what's Foxborough taste, love to try. We're gonna, there's a lot of sports around, so we would love to offer like some fitness, you know, group meals, too, healthy options eventually. We're gonna try, I mean, we're gonna keep everything as is and adjust as we go. We're gonna computerize and have online orders.
Okay. Yep.
And of course, the first thing, we're just gonna clean that place and do some...
Upgrade the building.
Yeah, a little bit.
Little small TLCs, like changing the roof. Well, the big project is changing the roof first.
So you're gonna shut down a little bit first and then reopen?
Yes.
Because we wanna change the inside a little bit, just put a little different, updated, upgraded furniture in there.
Yep.
Just paint the building inside, upgrade the bathrooms probably, just make it look nicer, make it look fresh again.
Right, right, right. When do you hope to open?
End of July, if we get all construction, get done and trained the people, so...
That's fast. That's really fast.
I know. I am very hopeful.
Optimistic.
Optimistic, I know, but construction is, we've been done a lot of project. We know it's one things, but then, that's why we, basically, that's why we actually, when we thought about kitchen, like, we're gonna keep the kitchen as is because we need to learn workflow and, like, you know, first, so we basically do, just gonna do cosmetics at the front and bathrooms. And then, like, you know, as we learn the workflow, and we're gonna do maybe adjustment to the kitchen, and like, you know, like with the kitchen architect, we're going to adjust later. So this is something we're not gonna jump at the beginning. It's just only like seating area where we're gonna do, you know, like TLC.
Any questions?
So I was just looking at the hours of operation. So I know you said you were gonna keep Primo's food, but you're gonna add on as well. So you're gonna open up in the morning for some type of breakfast service, too?
Right. We're gonna add some, just dishes with eggs, so we're kinda wanna like, okay, how would you like, because we're not gonna, like, you know, hopefully it's gonna be slow, so we can offer like a little options with different eggs, and then bring some little pastry, and we're thinking to bring La Vaza, crawfish, with the, you know, coffee, like espresso machine, so we have a...
The hours of operation, we probably, because I think he closed on Mondays, so we were thinking more like, open up a little earlier, but probably run until the same, like 4:00 PM, because you have upscale, kind of upscale restaurant next to it, so that's your big competition. So you usually, in this place, you're looking more for breakfast and lunch people, and then for the dinner at the next place over.
Right.
Yeah.
So we were thinking breakfast and lunch.
Yeah, like our focus is right now, like establishes a nice coffee shop with great sandwiches and lunch options.
Yeah, because she was really thinking to bring some coffee into the place, too, like, she's working with couple companies who probably will be one of our distributors for the coffee, because we wanna sell coffee as well.
Yeah. So you're gonna, so you're gonna close on Tuesdays? Or that's what you think right now?
Right. This is what, we definitely need one day off, like, you know, like this breakdown. So we thought like, from feedback from Chris, like Tuesday's a kind of slow day, so we thought maybe like, we'll do it on Tuesday, and then we're gonna see, like, how, you know, depend on many factors, how it's run.
You know something I was gonna tell you? A lot of places, they are, especially since COVID, some places, like where I work, they're closed, they've been closed on Mondays forever, for 90 years, always closed on Mondays. But some, I've noticed since COVID, a lot of places are closing one day, and they're picking Monday. And Monday and Tuesdays, you tend to be slower days, but closing on Tuesday is a good idea because a lot of places are closed on Mondays. So that gives, you know what I mean? That gives you the option that people will come to you on Monday because some of the other places are closed.
Right. This is what Chris said, like, he's noticed that, he feels like there's more missed calls on Monday than he get like on Tuesday, so we're like, okay, based on his feedback.
And then, once you guys get in, you'll figure, you'll figure it out.
Yeah, yeah. So it's kinda just, I was gonna say, the menu is always like things in progress, right? And then, like, we need, you know, people, build the community, I'm hoping, like, you know, make it like, build community board, make like some sustainability, you know, environmental adjustments to like make it kids friendly, and, you know, we really see that there's a lot of schools, sport, great centers, and we would like to have, you know, them come and visit, so...
Sure. Awesome.
Yeah, good.
Any parking issues? You have adequate parking?
Parking?
Parking, yeah.
I think it is five additional parking spaces. Also, we talked to the bank, that big parking on the other side of the street, we talked to the bank manager, and she says usually it is no problem if somebody parks there for like half an hour, because they have plenty of space, and they told us we'll work with them, maybe if it gets that busy.
We're not gonna advertise, but I just see like people sometimes do that for convenience. I mean, there is, what's Chris told us, it has, the property comes with five parking spots, and he has a front signature for like 10 minutes, it's more like for pickup, for quick. And as I said, since we're gonna have a computer, right, so we're hoping build up some online presence and have just quick pickup orders, too.
All right.
I feel like it's convenience, especially with the circle rates, there's like four streets, so a lot of...
Yeah, there's a lot of, it's a short walk, if, you know, people, they can't find a spot in front. There's, we've done so much about parking around that common, so they'll find their way to you, for sure.
All right. It's exciting.
Thank you. Any suggestion, maybe would you like anything to add, have something, like, you know, from your perspectives? Or would you like to...
For me, right now, nothing, but I'm excited to hear. You've got some ideas already that you're gonna change, change it up, so it'll be exciting to see some different things that, on different days.
Yeah. I kinda wanna have a little like sport theme, too, so like, we wanna do like some posters, make like, you know...
Because we're so close to Petret's place.
Yeah, I mean, all like sports, and we kinda wanna like, get this vibe of, and then we do have actually, in the building, great boot camp, and we'd like have her more, you know, visible, too.
Yeah.
One of our tenants, she does, like, she has like a little gym in there.
Kickboxing and, you know, gym. And maybe like, I don't know, we're gonna talk about, maybe we can, she can share the gym and have like little yoga, too, and, you know, so we, because, I mean, she not use that much, and maybe we can have...
More use out of it.
Yeah, definitely, we'd like, you know, have activity around.
Nice to have another breakfast place.
I would just say that it sounds like maybe you grew up from somewhere other than Foxborough. And so, to the extent that you have, you know, cuisine from somewhere that's, you know, that's different, unique, you could bring it to town and just add a different flavor to, you know, the places that you have to your establishment, that'd be interesting.
That's what she's saying, we're gonna start running some specials and see what people like. And people really like it, we're just gonna bring it into the menu.
Yeah, like, so one day, like, we're gonna do like one recipe of taco and see like feedback on that. And there's some certain Mediterranean, and like this great, really, we know the kids love especially some side balls and the Gansit poker balls, it's kinda like become trendy, but, I mean, there is like certain limitation to what we can bring, so we could, that's why we're gonna test and see like, you know, if there is any like favorite things, we may more focus on that route. But as I said, as I said, right now, we're gonna have one thing per week.
That's great. Good for you.
Do you mind reading?
Okay. Motion to approve the common virtual application for Fox Cafe Inc. Doing Businesses Fox Cafe at 6 Mechanic Street.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, looking forward. And we always say that if you want to have a grand opening, we have a big set of scissors for a ribbon cutting, if you want to do that.
That sounds great.
Nice. Any chamber would you recommend?
Nice.
Any chamber would you recommend to join in Foxborough? Look, you have any?
The Chamber and Foxborough Common Business Collaborative.
So Fox...
The Foxborough Common Business Collaborative is just uptown.
Okay.
I can get you guys information on that, and then the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce is great, too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, there's a downtown collaborative that, Leah stepped out because she's a neighbor, so...
We're on the building.
So due to that, that's why she stepped away, not because she doesn't like Primo's.
Yeah.
All right, great, congratulations. Looking forward.
Thank you very much.
Let us know when you want a ribbon cutting.
Yep.
Yes, we'll definitely, and we'll get all permission and everything, like, you know, line to...
Awesome. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, a couple of seconds behind, but we've got a public hearing that we will... Let's see, do you have the, you might not have it in front of you yet, do you? To read the public... We're looking for the public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's all right. Bring it up. What page was it on?
I got it. Let's see. All right. Uh, there's a public hearing for this one? No, this is a use of public way.
It's posted as a public hearing, I believe? No?
I didn't see it.
No.
Public hearing.
Apologies.
I don't believe the... Oh, the public way. Okay, yeah.
Public way, not a public hearing.
Gotcha. Great. The one day, yeah, exactly. All right, so this is a request for a one-day beer and wine license from Rodman Ride for Kids, it's something we've done in the past. Are they on, yeah, there you are. Oh, can't hear you yet.
You can't hear me?
Now we can. There you go.
Okay. I'll talk louder.
No, 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 you, I think you are on mute. We can hear you now.
Okay, good.
So, welcome back once again for the Rodman Ride. Introduce yourself and give us a little thumbnail once again.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Marissa Collins. I am the Operations Manager for Rodman for Kids. This'll be our 33rd annual, so since 91, we've raised over $150 million, all to help kids who really need it the most, all in our community. This'll be the second year that we're starting and finishing at 38 Napontet Street at Schneider Electric. As we, I know a lot of people think we're affiliated with Rodman Ford, we have no affiliation with them. So, you know, we're so lucky to have Schneider, who stepped up and, you know, has been a wonderful host to us. So the event will start and finish at 38 Napontet Street. We do have beer and wine that is arriving, would be arriving on location the day before that Friday, so I applied for two one-day permits. So that will be kept, whatever arrives on Friday, we have a large refrigerated truck, so that will be kept in the refrigerated truck along with some of the other food items that arrive or that we pick up the day before. And then on Saturday, as the barbecue starts, the beer and wine will be moved to iced coolers. And once we start serving the beer and wine, actually, I think it was last year or maybe the year before, I had some good suggestions from the board about the serving of the beer and wine. As of right now, we don't have anyone that's tip certified, but all of our volunteers are volunteers that have worked at Beer and Wine Ten in the past, all over the age of 25. They're instructed to ask for ID, anyone that looks 40 years or older, and whatever, it was a great actual, actually suggestion from someone on the board, was to have some extra volunteers, just making sure that nobody is overserved. It's probably our most well-staffed part of that day, and it's kind of separate, so it's not in the middle of the barbecue where all the other drinks are served, it's separate. So people are served, they're not given a can, it's poured into a cup, they're only given one at a time. So, and like I said, I mean, we're working on trying to find someone that's tip certified, but as of right now, we do not have anybody.
So I would think someone needs to be, like, I would approve it based on that someone will be tip certified before the event. Would be my recommendation, just to be consistent with how we treat these.
Yeah. Marissa, did you have tip certified people last year?
No, I don't think we ever have.
So...
We do have someone that oversees our barbecue, he owns restaurants within Boston, and he, I can ask him, it's right next to, next to where the beer and wine is, you know, he has the certificate of allergen awareness and a ServeSafe certification. I don't know if he's tip certified.
I think you should find someone who's gonna take that lead role, and you can literally take it online from the comfort of your own home and pay the, I forget whatever it is, $69 or $39. It's not super expensive, but I do think it's important that someone is leading and tip certified. That's just my opinion. We require that for everyone, and I think that this should be no different.
We have plenty of time, so...
If any of your volunteers work in that service, they'll be tip certified. You know what I mean? If you have anybody that's volunteering that works in a restaurant or on a bar, you know, yeah, anybody, even if you're not behind a bar, if you're serving the alcohol, it's a waitress or something. And you know something, too? I'm not sure how the insurance works for you guys when you're getting your insurance policy, but I know restaurants get a break on their insurance. That's why they require everybody to be tip certified, because if your entire establishment is, you get, you get a better rate on your insurance. I don't, I know you guys must have to pull, I don't know if it works for this type of event or not, if that matters, but I kinda agree with Leah, it'd be nice if you have just somebody that, even if that person is the one who's, who's walking around, kinda just observing, because, you know, if they, if they work in the industry, that they're tip certified, they're gonna pick up on maybe somebody that looks like they might, might be overserved, or, you know, I know it's a volunteer thing, it's a great cause, but just for your protection, too, for your event, might be a good idea?
Yeah, Marissa, I actually got, I actually got certified to do it as a volunteer, that's why I have it, and you do have it for a couple of years. I did mine through ServeSafe, so I do think it, I'm firm that I think it is important that it's something we should do.
Yeah, I'll for sure do that, and then, once we have a volunteer that is tip certified, I could forward that to Katie.
Yeah.
And you have plenty, like Leah said, you can take it on, plenty of time, you know, before your event.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great.
And if it's somebody that's gonna, you think will be with you every year, that'd be a good person to have it, because like Leah said, isn't it like five years or something?
I think it's two or three, I forget, I don't know.
Yeah, I make my kids all volunteer, so I'll have one of them do it.
You learned some good stuff, too. I mean, I'm just glad I did it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. So we could make a motion with that as a caveat.
Yeah, we can. Do we want to talk about the race and do them back-to-back, or just do, take them one at a time? There's two motions for this one.
Right. You want to talk about the race a little bit, too, and then we'll put, do the motions back-to-back?
You're talking to me, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So talk a little bit...
So...
Go ahead.
The route changed a little bit, and, you know, Foxborough Police was amazing, working. We have another person on our staff here who worked with Foxborough Police to determine the best places for the details. So we're expecting, I'm guessing on the high side, it hasn't come back since COVID. I don't expect over 1,000 riders. On the high side, I would say 900 riders and 400 volunteers, so probably about 1,300 people on site that day. So there is a 50 and a 25. We used to have 100 that started at, I think, 7:00 or 7:30. Now the 50 will start at 9:00, and then the 25 starts at 10:15. So usually, everybody is back. It's very rare that not everyone is back at the barbecue area by 3:00. So, you know, I guess depending on, I can't say where the details will be, but the Foxborough Police have been great working with us, and they pretty much tell us where they think they should be.
Any questions?
No. So we do have two motions. I'll just go through them one at a time, we'll vote on each one.
Yep.
Motion to approve the use of public way application for the Rodman Ride for Kids on September 23rd from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi. And just to clarify, because it's not in our motion or anywhere, so it's, it's the Napontet Street. We didn't really talk about where it is, just as I am looking at it.
Yeah. It's 38, the actual barbecue was set up at 38 Napontet Street, and that's where it starts, and the riders head off towards Chestnut Street, but the parking is at the, I don't know what that address is, across from the Y, that location. So that lot kind of abuts where there is a nice path that goes right to Napontet Street. So they allow us to park there, we have volunteers there and signage, and then they're directed to 38 Napontet Street.
Okay. And for the purposes of this, so basically, they're gonna come out of Napontet and go towards Sharon, and then they go through Sharon and Easton and Norton and Taunton and Rainham and Bridgewater, and then they come back in through like Easton and Rockland Street, and that's end of Sharon. So this is, this is for that, that side of town, just to kind of clarify where it is.
Yeah.
All right, so we had a motion to second.
No further discussion. All those in favor? Hi.
All right, then the second is the motion to approve the two one-day beer and wine license for the Rodman Ride for Kids on September 22nd and September 23rd for alcohol service from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, contingent upon proof of the tip certification for one lead volunteer before the event.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. Sounds good?
Good.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Bye-bye.
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 All right. A couple of minutes late, but sewer service agreement review and potential vote to approve the following agreement. Chris, you're on the hot seat. You gotta remind us.
I better do well.
Years ago, we already...
The guy sitting by him, he's known me since I was born.
No.
He's a Westwood transplant, too. All right. So you guys should have seen...
Who are you?
Chris Gallagher, I'm the Director of Public Works, before you tonight to discuss an intermunicipal agreement between Foxborough and Sharon for sewer. So the DPW has been working through our special town council, Stephen Meadows, with Merrick O'Connell, over, really over the last couple of years now, to draft an amendment to the IMA that was created in 2018. In 2018, we drafted that agreement because we had bought capacity back from the Skankow properties, which included the Independent Forge Association, Cannon Forge, Summerfield, and Quail Ridge, which is the association in Sharon. At the time, the document really didn't give us a process to how we would sell to other properties outside of Foxborough, how we would move that through the existing IMA, including responsibilities of, you know, what is Foxborough Sewer, what is Sharon Sewer, what is private sewer. So when the Sharon Gallery project came forward two-plus years ago now, looking for sewer capacity, it opened up that IMA again for some revisions, an amendment, and then it stalled out a little bit after the, this board and the Water and Sewer Commissioners voted to sell that capacity outside of Foxborough. It stalled, they had some zoning issues they were working through, they had some mastectomy things they were working through, so the project stalled a little bit. Over the last six to eight months, it's been moving along pretty well. Finally, we have all of the parties involved, have come to an agreement, consensus on the document itself, along with how we move forward in the future if more properties were to come forward and look for sewer within Foxborough's service area. So what you have is a, let's see, an amended and restated intermunicipal agreement between, by and between the town of Foxborough and town of Sharon for municipal sewer service. That keeps the original document in place with regards to the Quail Ridge property, which was the initial out-of-town service area. We then wanted a way to add in future properties. So the addendum one is actually the addition of the Sharon Gallery properties, with the intention that if there are other properties in the future, we would do an addendum and just add, instead of revising the whole IMA. We really wanted a general document that would let us add those in without reopening the whole thing. So those are the, the actual IMA. The third document you have is the agreement between the town of Foxborough and the 95 LOC, which is the owner of that Sharon Gallery project. Going back to the 2021 vote that this board took, as well as the Water and Sewer Commissioners, this document just formalizes that agreement. It does have in there their responsibilities for upgrades downstream from their property. There was an analysis done that showed there were some pipeline segments that needed to be upgraded. There was some work at the pump station within the Sharon property that needed some, some work, and it just documents as they phase in their flow, when those upgrades need to be done in relationship to that project and their construction phasing. So going back, we are agreeing to sell them 34,800 gallons per day. So going back, we are agreeing to sell them 34,800 gallons per day. It is less than what we bought back from the Skanko properties going back to 2018. So really, we're just reallocating that flow back to the area that it was already coming from. One thing that is changing in this agreement, um, and it's something we're working out. So this kind of one, one last step, um, with the Quail Ridge Association, and then we'll move it forward with the Cannon Forge, Summerfield Associations, as well as that. We have been billing them on a lump sum for sewer usage. So we calculate meter of the flow that goes through the lift station. We send an, one bill to the IFA. They then say, tell the Quail Ridge Association how much they owe, and they pay a lump sum back to Foxborough. With this process, Sharon will actually start billing each individual water user in Sharon for sewer flow. So Sharon will read the meters, they'll bill for water and sewer. When they collect the revenue, they'll then turn that revenue over to the town of Foxborough. Similar to how we do things with the town of Mansfield with water usage. So some, some Mansfield properties that have our meters, there are some Foxborough properties that have Mansfield meters. We bill the same way. Um, that way they're, they remain our customers. Those Sharon customers will remain Sharon customers. They have their, the water meters. Then we don't, we're not duplicating the effort. Um, so that is one change as from how we're billing. Now it's an operational thing that, uh, both of Sharon DPW and we have agreed to, to move forward with.
So Chris, quick question. So do, right now, like I, I know Cannon Forge, Summerfield, we all pay the same. It's not, you know what I mean? The bill comes from you guys to beat up. Is that how it's going to be in, um, in Quail Ridge too?
No, so what?
I mean, so what's going to go to Sharon, then Sharon's going to forward it, or?
So what we'll do moving forward is both the Quail Ridge Association and the new property will pay their sewer flow based on their water usage. So each individual house, each individual building within the, that new development will all have a water and sewer bill. Um, they will no longer pay a lump sum for their sewer flow.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, I probably should know this, but I'm, I'm, I've never served on our IFA board. Were they just paying, like, so there was no type of monitoring how much sewerage they used?
So there, there's a sewer meter at the town line.
Okay.
So they are, the property manager was reading that meter on a daily basis.
Yeah, okay.
And then when the bill would go from IFA to Quail Ridge, they would know how much that flow is, and, and they were billing based on that, that flow.
I was thinking, I know, I know when we first moved in there, there was a big to-do because the build, I don't think the builder speculated, I don't think the town of Mansfield realized that they were building three and four bedroom homes. And Summerfield and Cannon Forge were two-bedroom homes.
Right.
And so I don't think they realized what the flow was actually going, going to be. And I know there was some, you know, discussion because I think, you know, they were trying to figure out how they were going to build, you know, build separately. Obviously, you can't just take the number of homes between the two. You get homes that are, you know, two rooms more than the other ones. So I might be jumping ahead. The only question I really had was, I saw it in here about the maintenance of, of, um, so if there's a problem in Quail Ridge, Foxborough's going to, going to look into that? I mean, as far as the lines?
Yeah, so the, the gravity line from Gavin's Pond Road at the endpoint there, all the way down to Cannon Forge, Foxborough will maintain. Um, there's a little discrepancy from, between Quail Ridge and the town of Sharon as to who actually owns that, who has the financial responsibility for that. Quail Ridge has already always paid for that maintenance. There's, like I said, a discrepancy as to who owns it. There is an agreement from 1991 between Foxborough, Sharon, and Quail Ridge that, um, we will, we are looking to rescind so that Quail Ridge no longer has any financial burden on that system. So that'll be part of.
Which is kind of similar what you, what you did with Cannon Forge.
Correct.
And Summerfield when you bought the capacity.
Yeah, but we, we, both the town of Foxborough and Sharon thought that we had moved that forward with Quail, Quail Ridge as well. Um, the property manager was the same property manager at the time. And it does not appear they had received that information back in 2018. So we just need, there's one document from 32 years ago that we need to rescind. Sharon, our attorney, town council of Sharon, and the Quail Ridge attorney are finalizing that document now. They're going to do that before Sharon votes to approve the IMA. So there is that one last piece that's, that's still out there. I got a call as late as 3:00 this afternoon from our town council that said, you know, laid that out. That there's one, one little piece left. Um, so.
And the other, the other thing is, um, again, I'll probably hear from it somewhere down the road. I'm not on the IFA board. Same thing, I think we asked, I think there was some, and I don't know if it's true or not. There was some discussion that the pipes were going to have to be made bigger to, for that flow to come all the way through. So if, like right now, um, Cannon Forge and IFA take care of the roads, like you guys would come in if there was an issue with the, with the system.
Right.
So if there's an issue in Sharon that's making you have to do something with the pipes, is the town also going to take care of any, any up digging, fixing roads or whatever in, in, um, well, that's all IFA anyhow that would go, go out there. You would never be any, in, anywhere to do with.
Yeah, so we're responsible for the pipe. This will, you know, kind of formalize a response for the pipe from Cochasset Street all the way to the end of the gravity line in Sharon. If there are any main breaks, if there are anything, any, you know, future upgrades that are needed, you know, we would be responsible for everything from the pipe all the way up to the pavement.
Okay.
So same thing.
Including the pavement?
Including the pavement. And, and yeah, in that stretch, so.
Yeah, why I'm asking is there's some talk about them doing the road, they're going to, I think they're going to chip seal, but then at some point, they're going to have to do the roads over there. My point would be if, if, and, and that's on the cost of the residents in there. So if the roads get done again, and then you guys have to dig them up.
Yeah, and that's a conversation when, when the developer is ready to put that, upsize those pipes. He has looking, looking at different options. He can pipe burst it where he doesn't have to dig, you know, a 200-foot trench to replace that piece of pipe. But if he does, then we would have the conversation with Cannon Forge IFA to.
Yeah. Well, and I, why I was bringing it up, because I don't, I know I don't have to tell you how to do your job, but in my head, I was like, if, if that might be an issue, that might be something that, it's mitigation money that would come from the developer in Sharon. Not that the town of Foxborough would have to, like if you have to change pipes in there for them.
Right.
Maybe so.
Yeah, so that.
That's between you guys and attorneys and stuff.
Yeah, and the sale, the agreement to sell the sewer capacity outlines, you know, specifically what they have to do for up, those upgrades. Um, and they know they're responsible for, you know, from the pavement down to sewer main. You know, an interesting thing about this is that, um, they have to pump from their property all the way down to that gravity system, so they're going to have a force main. Sharon will actually own the force main because it's in the public right of way. But the agreements all push back, put back on the developer that they are responsible for any maintenance of the system. So they're financially on the hook for that system, although Sharon will own it.
Yeah.
So Chris, this looks like you covered all the bases here. It looks like a good arrangement on the surface. My only question would be, are there any long-term impacts on Foxborough residents in terms of available water and sewer capacity?
It shouldn't be. So we don't, we don't supply water to this property, um, or, or the Sharon properties. 34,000 gallons is, is a, on the water side, a small amount for what we produce, even if it was, was on us. As far as sewer goes, um, when we expanded the, um, MFN treatment plant, Foxborough gained 170,000 gallons per day. When we bought back the capacity from the Skanko properties, we added another 60,000 gallons per day. And then also in the MFN agreement, we also gained unused Title V capacity. So historically, when we sold sewer, we were selling it at Title V capacity, which is 110 gallons per, per bedroom. Um, that's not what people use. So when we sell sewer, we actually sell it at 65 gallons per bedroom. So we, my predecessor Roger did, did all the math, figured out how much we were using, how much we had sold to the town of Mansfield over the years, and we actually gained that capacity back. So, um, you know, we currently have somewhere between 300 and 400,000 gallons per day of available sewer flow. Um, and, you know, in the words of, of Mike Stanton, the Chair of the Water and Sewer Commission, he's in the business of selling water and sewer. So if he can sell it, he's going to. Um, with that in mind, there is a debt from that plan expansion. So we're selling capacity to pay off that debt. So this is actually, this is a good thing. This is out of a, a five and a quarter million dollar debt. This is almost one and a half million dollars of that debt. That does not fall back on our ratepayers within the town of Foxborough. Um, so that's pretty significant.
And you know what, Dennis? How, how the capacity, of course, when it was brought up, the agreement that was, when they built Summerfield and Cannon Forge was that if we weren't using the capacity, the town had the right to buy it back. And it, it was funny because it was bought back at like $5 and change and sold for $45. So there was lots of people in Cannon Forge that were like, well, we sold it for $5. And first of all, that was an agreement that was made before. The number was put in. But I was explaining at a meeting, but you have to realize that money, that, that extra money is also helping you as a taxpayer. And, and, you know, when you're, our water systems and stuff, everything that you guys do. So I will guarantee you, anybody in Summerfield or Cannon Forge, we, we weren't even touching the capacity. That's why it got sold. So it, it, I could only speak that whole area because that's the direct butter of this project. And it'll, it should never, ever affect any, any of the 300-plus homes in there.
All right, any other questions?
Are we ready for both motions?
So I guess I would, I would just preference it if, if you're ready to vote tonight. I'm happy to take it. If you are seeing it for the first time, and I, you know, I never liked coming back, but always liked coming back. So, you know, if you guys are ready to vote.
I'm good.
I'm good. We just have two separate motions.
Correct.
Oh, let me ask one other quick question. So all of, all of this has somebody on IFA seen this agreement? I know it's not directly with them, or as far as any.
No, this has nothing to do with the existing agreement with, with IFA on, for the Foxborough properties.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to go with two motions. Motion to approve the agreement, the intermunicipal agreement as approved by the Foxborough Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners entitled amended and, and restated intermunicipal agreement by and between the town of Foxborough and the town of Sharon for municipal sewer service as presented, including addendum number one thereto, and authorize the town manager to execute said agreement on behalf of the town of Foxborough.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
And then the second one, motion to approve the agreement entered into by the Foxborough Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners and 95 LLC entitled Agreement for Conveyance of Wastewater to the MFN wastewater treatment plant as presented, and authorize the town manager to execute said agreement on behalf of the town of Foxborough.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to just suggest that we do tell me, uh, Selectman's update and have him talk about that one.
Uh.
It's not on the agenda.
Right. Yeah, 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 yeah. I was too excited to talk about sewer. Hi.
Yeah, well, I think we should talk about it right now too.
Can you just talk about the lot?
Yes.
And make that announcement. This isn't on the agenda because we didn't have the news, late breaking.
Yes. Um, we are going to be paving the veterans parking lot, um, behind the stores on Central Street, Cochasset Street, Wall Street. Um, the highway crew will be, DPW crew will be in there starting at 11 o'clock tomorrow night. Um, we have some prep work to do back there. And then the paving company is going to be in first thing Thursday morning to pave that parking lot, which means that anybody who typically parks there either overnight or during the day needs to get their car out of there by 10 o'clock tomorrow night, Wednesday night.
How about our favorite topic dumpsters?
So the, we have a couple dumpsters that we are going to move out of the way on a temporary basis while the work is done, and then we can put them back. And we've talked to a couple of the property owners that let them know that we're going to have to move them temporarily, and, um, we're working with them, so.
And obviously, all the, uh, uh, businesses know you're going to be in there for a day. Is that going to have to settle for a day or two?
So we're going to, we'll leave it closed until first thing Friday morning. And when we come in Friday morning, we'll go ahead and open it back up. The striping is to be determined. Um, typically that has to, you know, set for a few days a week before you actually put paint on it, otherwise it turns brown very quickly. So it may be chaos parking back there. Try to remember where those spaces are. And don't use too much space, you know, park, you know, where you think you fit. But we'll get out there and stripe that. Um, it'll be the same configuration. That's kind of been determined that there's, there's not much of a better way to park back there and fit more spaces. So we'll put it back the way it is.
And because we spend so much time back in that parking lot, there are a couple cars sometimes that don't move. Uh, the, like I noticed, there was nothing on that back wall.
Yep, there was a trail that had been back there that has since, yep, that has been moved. So the, we were going to talk to the, um, the army, the recruiters, um, to get their vehicle, make sure their vehicles are out front. And, you know, for the night, they can park out on Central Street. You know, there's no, no snow coming, so they can park on the street.
Schneider lot? And can you just do a announcement?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we've been coordinating. Paige sent something out to the.
Yeah, I saw it on Facebook, yeah. I'll be up first thing tomorrow.
Heather, Heather. Your job got in the way.
Will the dumpsters, um, ruin any of that? If they, if they go back in a couple of days, the weight of them, or?
It'll, it'll cool pretty quickly. It, we haven't had those 90-degree summer days yet.
Yeah.
Well, we did, but it was back in April.
Those two days.
They're coming the end of the week.
So, um, no, we'll wait until it cools off before we, um, so that, you know, on that, there is some of the parking lot, you know, right up against the buildings. We're not going to be able to, with this paving company, do that work. So there is potential for future work to go back in there and do some of that handwork and actually address, um, closer to the building that this company's not going to be able to get to within the budget that we have at this time.
And one more thing while I got you.
Yeah.
All right. West Street.
Yep.
Couple of complaints, couple of communication issues. Maybe give us a quick update of what's going on.
Sure. So West Street, they have finally moved past the campground. The work, water main work, all the way up to the campground from South Street End is complete. There is a little bit of trench paving left. There's a couple hundred feet that has the binder on it, so it's down about an inch and a half. Um, that should be done by the end of the week, if not early next week. The water main work now will continue up the hill, past Daniel Street to the town line at Conant and Caton. Hoping that the water main itself is in in the next two to three weeks. And then they'll do all the services, connections to that, and then finish paving and be out of here by, I want to say it, and I'm going to regret it, but I talked, hopefully August 1st, well before school buses start running again. Um, so we've been communicating. I was talking to Al Daniels this morning about the process. He's asked for a couple detour signs to be added into the mix along the way, so we've been accommodating that. But that's from here on out, for the remainder of the project, it's from the campground up to the town line is where they'll be working.
So the other way going out of Normandy, so now the campers don't have to go up Mill Street, which is, which is.
They can go straight out to South Street.
Straight out west.
Yep, yep, and they were doing that.
I think the actual complaint, was it Founder's Day? It was given, like to, just generally out to us. It's, it's open, it's closed, it's open, it's closed. That.
There was a lot of bouncing around from the, from the dam to the water main to services, the paving to, there was a lot of moving, moving parts, and it was tough to keep those updates going, um, on a daily basis.
Yeah, it wasn't that you were doing it. Has, the work has to be done. It was just, just the, the communication of knowing if it was open or closed was really the complaint.
Right. So, so will that part of the road be closed from Normandy to the town line?
During the day.
Yeah.
So it'll be a 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM closure. Um, and then when they're done working for the day, it'll open back up.
It'll open back up. Okay.
Is there, so let's say, I can't, I mean, turn around campers tough on that area where there's not a lot to turn around. Can they go up that neighborhood or no?
They can.
Okay.
And we've, what we've been doing is posting a, a police detail at the town line so that they can grab anybody who's coming in, figure out where they're, how far down they're going. They'll know day-to-day where the contractor is working, um, and they'll help those campers get turned around. On Google Maps, I did talk to Rob Verdon, and they did remove the road closure that had been placed at the dam location. So that helps people come off of, of South Street, knowing that they can, can get in there. I'm working with them to get a road closure from the other side just, um, for the next month, six weeks or so.
But unfortunately, there's that strip from Route 1 to our town border.
Right.
That's sort of no man's land, because we can't put the detail at Route 1.
Right. We do have some road closure signs post, posted closer to Route 1. So they, they are aware if, if they're trying to make that turn, they see it before they make it. But once, if I can get Google Maps, if I can get Rob to adjust Google Maps and ways, then they, they won't even, GPS won't even tell them that they can come in that way. And what the campground does too is they send any, they send communication to any arriving guests that says, "Come in this way, do not come in this way." So for the last several months, um, they've been telling them, "Come in off of Route 1." That communication now changes and tells them to come in and out of South Street.
So just clarification, now from. So just clarification, now from Normandy Campground to South Street is open.
Other ways closed.
Correct. Okay?
Yep.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
All righty, Town Manager's Update.
Actually, not much in the update, other than the transfers, which is, you've got a memo in your packet regarding those transfers. And if it's the pleasure of the Board, I'd walk you through that quickly.
Yes, please.
Okay. So there's a memo in your packet. This is the fiscal 2023 year-end transfers. These are transfers that are needed at the end to close out the fiscal year, where we've over expended some budgets, and maybe we've got some capacity in another budget. In some instances, it may even be capacity within an individual budget to go from an expense line to a personnel, or personnel to expense. So I think the first thing to point out, the, first of all, the memo, obviously I wasn't here for most of this, so the memo was prepared by the Finance Department. But the most important thing to point out right out of the gate is that within all of the budgets or within the overall budget, obviously we're going to finish in the black. There'll be a, a good amount of free cash, which is at the end of the fiscal year, and it's not certified yet. It's revenues that come in above what you budgeted, but also expenditures that come in below. So overall, expenditures will come in below. These transfers are needed just to make sure that individual lines are, are not over expended. So in terms of the transfers, first of all, we're not using any available funds, so we're not bringing any funding in from outside of the individual budget lines. We're not hitting special revenue accounts or trust funds, and we're not hitting the emergency reserve account, which is at the front, front end, we have 75,000 for unexpected expenditures. So we're not touching any of that. These are just transfers within individual budgets. On the second page, you'll see a summary of them. I'll walk you through them very quickly. There's a $3,000 transfer needed in the town manager's budget, basically due to payouts from the private, the previous town administrator, as well as the assistant when, when they both departed. There's a $35,000 transfer in for the finance office. This is for funding needed for consulting services for the interim valuation, but also the pro EMS ambulance billing. It's an interesting concept here, is as the fire department does more runs, the ambulance billing service that we use sends out more bills, so they charge us more. So despite the fact that we need to transfer in to cover the, the billing, the revenues obviously that are coming in more than offset that. So this is just to take care of the, the ambulance fees for the billing portion of it. There's some modifications that were made to the town clerk and the election workers, modification due to increases in minimum wage. So there's a $4,000 transfer into the town clerk elections budget. There's a $71,000 transfer into, for land use. This is due to a, essentially an employee going out on, on leave, ultimately taking a disability retirement. But in interim, we had to backfill that position with a, with an inspector. So that was an unexpected, an unexpected shortage in staffing that needed on a temporary basis to be backfilled. So that's the need for, for that transfer.
That includes the backfill?
That's the backfill, yes. Yep. And then we have the central maintenance budget. This is primarily an increase due to gasoline and diesel expenses increasing up during the duration of the fiscal year, causing that budget to be over expended. So we've made, by the way, modifications to these budgets into fiscal 2024 to reflect these, these price changes, so this won't be a recurring problem next year. The big one here is the fire department is a $140,000 transfer in needed. My understanding is explained to me is this in part is due to some of the recent collective bargaining contracts that were settled, stipends needed that were increased that rippled through. And also, there was some extraordinary repairs needed to some fire apparatus that was unplanned for. There's a $27,000 transfer into the joint public safety building. This was a change that was made mid-fiscal year, I believe, to bring in a community response social worker into that department. So that transfer is needed to offset that. There's a slight overage in the street lighting budget of $10,000, so that transfer is needed. That budget's been modified moving into fiscal '24. The library has, and last but not least, we have $30,000 transfer from salaries within the library to expenses. And basically, this is to allow them to replace the carpet. So this is within their budget. My understanding is that proposal went to the, went to the capital planning committee, and that was all, already been approved. So that transfer from a capital planning standpoint is, was authorized, and now we just need to perfect the actual transfer for budgetary purposes. In total, it's $410,000 of transfers. These don't require the Board's vote or approval. These are transfers that are allowed to be made at the staff level, at the, at the manager level. But for transparency, we want to make sure that you're aware these transfers are being made and have some, some basic documentation as for the, the rationale behind them. So I'm happy to answer any questions the Board may have. But in order to, again, close out the fiscal year, these are transfers that will be needed to be made.
Any questions?
Did it, is this all coming from free cash? I know in the past, when we were on advisory committee, we would see where, like, just say, the police department had money left over.
Yeah.
Isn't it in here?
So the last.
The bill would transfer, transfer it over.
Sure.
That's, I was just curious.
Yeah, it's in here.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So there's no, so Steph.
Oh, it's the second, the second document.
Yeah, there's no, there's no transfers in from free cash. We're not bringing any additional resources into the budget. We're just essentially reallocating within departmental budgets and in some cases between departmental budgets to balance things out. So if a department, if a budget had excess left over and another department needed, they over expended, we're just making that transfer. The last page has the, the details of the transfers.
This was the exact page I was looking at.
Yeah, the ins and, the ins and outs are provided for you here. The reality is, most of, most transfers, when you get to the end of the fiscal year, more often than not, they're personnel-related. Either somebody left, or somebody went out on an illness and you had to backfill the position on a temporary basis, or you settled a contract and you increased, you know, stipends and so forth. And that's primarily what these, what these overages are. Anywhere where a budget was over expended, something that you can really kind of plan a little bit better for, like say, streetlights, that's been adjusted to make sure that we're not.
Every year, streetlights are the.
Yeah, you know. But again, you know, we own, we own the streetlights, we own the maintenance, and sometimes you get a little extraordinary maintenance that's required. You, you try to plan out what your average costs are, but, you know, sometimes you get a little.
This isn't that bad. I thought the streetlights a lot were like closer to 50,000. One time the over支出 was like 75,000, remember? So 10,000 isn't really bad at all.
Yeah. So those are transfers. Again, if there's any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them, but we're just transferring within budget. We're not increasing the overall budget at all. There's no modifications to bring revenues in. It just allows us to close out these lines. And, you know, and you want to do this because you want these budgets to reflect what they actually spent for planning purposes for subsequent years.
Going forward.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Selectman's update? Anybody have anything?
I, I just said, you sent us a note about the fire engine accident last night. You wanted, anything more about that?
Yes, unfortunately, one of our engines was up on the highway, and it was struck by a, a, a passing-by motor vehicle. We're waiting on the police reports. I won't get into the details of, of the accident itself, but it was of no fault of any of our staff. So it is an insurance claim. We're working through that process now. The good news is nobody was, was hurt, significantly hurt. So it's damage to property. So now the big thing is for us to work through our insurance company to submerge it out, get the expenses back. And the bigger issue is, you know, this isn't like your, you know, your Honda, you know, Civic that you can take in and get fixed up. This is a very unique, all-custom vehicle. So it will require time to order the parts and to get in the queue to get fixed. So in the meantime, I had met with the fire chief this afternoon, and we're looking at probably four to six months before that, a piece of apparatus will be back in to service. So we're looking at the possibility of everything from borrowing a, an extra ladder truck from another community to seeing about whether or not the insurance will potentially cover us pursuing a rental. So, so we're looking at all those options right now. But, but again, through no fault of our own, you know, it was an accident, and we'll be pursuing, as I said, to be made whole through, through either the driver's insurance and/or, you know, potentially our, our coverage as well.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you. Founder's Day recap. It was phenomenal. It was a great day.
Weather was perfect.
Yeah, weather was great. The fireworks were great. The parade was great. Going down to the field was a, a lot of fun, and kudos to the Founder's Day Committee. Once again, they did absolutely a great job. Lot of young families out along the roadways. It was packed. And we all got a chance to be involved, which is great. And just one other thing, the fox in the burrow, they're all in front of their various places. I think that was a huge success. See a lot of families over the weekends, walking around town, going to various places for people to see the foxes. Once again, they are in front of Rodman Center, Citizens Bank, Library, Town Hall, and the YMCA. And each one is, is truly a work of art. And we're gonna have, fill us in, Christina, when's the, sort of like the ribbon cutting?
So we're doing an installation celebration as they've all been installed. And thank you to the DPW, the crew there did a really great job of doing that. They spent all day, I think, last Thursday doing it, and then this Thursday, I think, if they haven't already installed, but they will be. We're going to be doing a ribbon cutting, starting at the, or installation, starting at the YMCA, and then moving to Citizens, the Library, the Marilyn Rodman Center, and then front of Town Hall, about 15 minutes in between, and just gonna take a photo with all the sponsors, the artists, and anybody. So like, for the library, the library director, and any of the trustees that would like to be there. For Town Hall, we, you know, invited the DPW director and the staff that installed that, and just any, anybody different that, that was involved. Also, the, you know, cultural council members that made that happen, just so they have a photo of it at their, at each location.
Can we just update what's on the homepage? Because it still tells you how to, how to apply for one. And I've never got so many questions about the map and why they're there, what's gonna happen. So if we can just update that, what's out there is from like January, and it's just, it's old.
And on a, a little bit of a sad note, one of our long-term board members, Dave Brown, passed away over the weekend. You know, condolences go out to his family at this moment. Any other from, okay, let's do.
All right, action items?
Action items.
All right, so we've got five action items. Motion to accept $668 donation for the senior Olympic t-shirts from the Friends of Foxborough seniors.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the one-year earth removal permit extension to July 19th, 2024 for the Massachusetts Electric Company at 63 Elbe Street site.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Thomas Murphy as the planning board alternate for a term to end May 31st, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion to approve the 31 commercial parking licenses for fiscal year 2024 as more particularly described in, on the back page of the posted agenda from June 20th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just confirming, Katie, that everyone, all the departments, police, fire, building, finance, no outstanding issues, kind of like Seth you brought up, you know, on the, the other ones. Just making sure that we closed the loop there.
Yep, everyone is on board. I talked to finance this morning, and there was only one outstanding water bill for all 31 lots, and so that check will be dropped off by the end of this week. So the license will be sent out till then. But that was really the only outstanding invoice. So finance was great. Scott and Paige were great. There were six lots that had special permitting that was done May 11th. Those are good for another three years. So it really was just kind of like a team effort on making sure that every department was signed off, everyone was good to go. So we, I sent over just some stats just comparative to last year. So, yeah, we're looking pretty good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we have two minutes. Motion to approve the May 23rd, 2023 Select Board Meeting Minutes?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I wasn't at one of them. Do we have the one that I wasn't at? I forget what date it was.
I think I took them off, but I can.
The 23rd, I think I, May 23rd, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yep, and I'm not there. Yep, Ian Fitzgerald, there he is. That's why there was an extra member there. It was our selectman for a day, sorry. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve June 6th, 2023 Select Board Meeting Minutes?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I wasn't there.
You can still vote, though.
Okay.
All right, so just a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Was already made?
Yep.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Good night, everybody.
And we're not back until, we skip one now.
The 11th?
July 11.
July 11. So have a great Fourth of July week.